Everyone, I'd like to call the December 11th, 2017 Salisbury City Council Legislative Session to Order. I would ask that everyone please silence any electronic devices that make noise. If you have to take a phone call, we ask that you please take it outside the chamber. Should an emergency arise during the meeting, please exit the chamber, make a right-hand turn, and go down the stairs. If that exit is blocked, please make a left-hand turn and then a right-hand turn and proceed down the stairs. Please do not use the elevators in cases of emergency. If you need assistance, please let us know, and we'll be happy to provide it to you. Is Danny Pace here tonight? He is not. In that case, we will please join me in a moment of silent meditation. Thank you. Please rise now and join me in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda.
Ms. Jackson.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I want to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda. Good evening, Mrs. Nichols.
Good evening, Mr. Heath, Counsel. On the consent agenda tonight, we have the November 13th, 2017 Regular Meeting Minutes, Resolution Number 2795, approving the reappointment of Brian Rager to the Zoo Commission for term ending December 2020, Resolution Number 2796, approving the reappointment of James Thomas to the Planning and Zoning Commission for term ending December 2022, Resolution 2797, approving the reappointment of Scott Saxman to the Historic District Commission for term ending December 2020, Resolution Number 2798, approving the reappointment of Gregory Tyler to the Disability Advisory Committee for term ending December 2020, Resolution Number 2799, approving the reappointment of Marion Keenan to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee for term ending December 2020, Resolution Number 2800, approving the reappointment of Joel Olive to the Central City District Commission for term ending December 2019, Resolution Number 2801, approving the reappointment of Michael Perry to the Parks and Recreation Committee for term ending December 2020. We have Resolution Number 2802, accepting grant funds in the amount of $5,000 through the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore for the purpose of purchasing a McGruff Safe Kids Total Identification System Law Enforcement Custom Identification Card and Digital Fingerprint Device. We have Resolution Number 2803, accepting donations for the Santa's Workshop Program and approving such donations to a special-purpose revenue fund as recommended by the mayor, approving -- we have two manufacturer -- manufacturing exemption requests. The first one is Delmarva Printing, Inc., for equipment purchased in 2016, and the other one is Poly One Designed Structures and Solutions LLC for equipment purchased in 2016. And that's it.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. I'd like to recognize those who have been appointed tonight. If they are here, if I call your name, please stand. Brian Rager. James Thomas is here, I know. Scott Saxman. Greg Tyler, I know, is here. Marion Keenan, I know, is here. Joel Olive. Michael Perry. Well, thank you very much for volunteering or being volunteered. And we wish you well. Thank you. I am a little disappointed that McGruff isn't here. But...
Mr. President.
Yes.
Can we also just acknowledge Poly One and Delmarva Printing for continuing to invest in manufacturing jobs in Salisbury?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I want to entertain a motion to approve the award of bids.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda. Good evening, Mrs. Miller.
Good evening. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Salisbury Department of Infrastructure and Development to contract for the -- excuse me, design services for the Riverside Traffic Circle Project. In lieu of competitive bidding issued by the City of Salisbury, we respectfully seek council's approval to award a piggyback contract. This type of contract is a form of intergovernmental cooperative purchasing in which an entity, in this case, the City of Salisbury, will be extended the same or lower pricing in terms of a contract entered into by another entity. Contract Number BCS 2011-09 issued by the State Highway Administration by virtue of a competitive public solicitation process was awarded on February 20th, 2014, and is valid through February 18th, 2020. This contract was awarded to multiple vendors in response to the solicitation for planning, preliminary, and final engineering design and construction management services statewide. Per Section SC 16-3, General Policy of Competitive Bidding: Exceptions of the City of Salisbury Charter, competitive bidding procedures performed by the City of Salisbury are not necessary or appropriate in the following circumstance: contracts in which the city receives a contract price negotiated by the state, county, or other governmental entity pursuant to a valid contract. This charter designation, therefore, allows the City of Salisbury to procure from the awarded vendors the services described in the Maryland State Highway Administration Contract, BCS 2011-09. Wallace Montgomery &amp; Associates, LLP, was one of the vendors awarded a contract under BCS 2011-09. The original SHA solicitation and the contract between SHA and Wallace Montgomery &amp; Associates was reviewed by the Department of Procurement, the Department of Infrastructure and Development, and the city solicitor, and the city was able to negotiate a scope of work and cost appropriate for the services desired. There are sufficient funds in the account noted in your packet to pursue the requested services from the vendor. The attached departmental memo has additional information regarding the services we intend to utilize under this contract. The Department of Procurement requests council's approval to award Contract 120-18 to Wallace Montgomery &amp; Associates in the amount of $143,665.50.
Any questions or comments?
Do we have any idea how much money we may have saved by going this route? Any idea? And just...
Because we did not solicit for the services, I wouldn't have an understanding of competitively what we could have procured it for.
Any other questions?
We do know that this has, to this point, come in under what we estimated this would cost.
Yeah.
But how much, I think, would be really just difficult to say.
Yeah, I saw that it was lower than what we had anticipated in the budget, so... But I also feel good that they've been vetted by State Highway Administration, so that's not an easy task.
Very true.
Any other questions? All right. Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
The award of bids, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Mrs. Miller.
Thank you.
We'll now have the presentation of the FY '17 Audit and Financial Statements.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for entertaining a visit from your auditors this evening. My name is Pamela Baker, and I am the audit partner responsible for the oversight of your audit engagement with the firm Barbicane Thornton &amp; Company. Tim Sawyer is a manager with our firm, and he just handed out copies of the final audit reports for you. Tim, we need one more.
It's all.
Okay. Good. In case...
I know where to find you.
There you go. Okay. So, Tim just handed out the final audit reports for you to take with you this evening. You will recall that last week in your work session, we did have an opportunity to come in. At that point in time, the audit report was in a draft format. I can tell you this evening that we did not have any substantive changes to what we reviewed last week. We had a couple of small typos, you know, as it goes through the review process. We do put every audit engagement through three separate independent review processes, and so that's what happened between last week and this week, but we did not do any additional audit work, and we did not make any changes. Also, Keith, your finance director, had an opportunity to go through the draft document and did not have any changes either. What I just wanted to do for you this evening was to just give you an overview of the audit report itself without delving into too much of it, because I know, you know, people in the audience, you know, don't have it in front of them, but I will summarize for you the results of this document. First of all, first and foremost, is the independent auditor's report. If you want to look at it in terms of the overall report, it's on pages two and three. The independent auditor's report is the culmination of what we do as your independent auditors. So it's our responsibility to look at the financial statements that have been prepared by management for us to look at the internal controls of what led up to those financial statements. So what were the controls surrounding revenue, expenditures, budgetary controls, payroll cycles? So what happens beneath the surface or behind the scenes that get you to this final financial statement document? We look at what those controls are like, we make sure they are adequate, and then we test them. Once we identify what the controls are, we test them. So we test your major cycles to be sure that the financial statements are fairly presented. What I can tell you as a result of the independent audit is that we did have a clean or an unmodified opinion. We found that the financial statements prepared by management were fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. What that means, a couple of things. Number one, that means that the appropriate transactions were recorded in the proper way. So you have, you know, a standard-setting body that says, if you buy a piece of equipment, this is the way you have to record it. We make sure that that happens. These statements reflect that. We did not have any material adjustments that we detected as a result of our audit. While we were on-site, we did work with management to record the adjustments necessary to get your pension reflected appropriately, but that was something that we were asked to do, you know, before we even engaged, so it's not something that management -- that there was an oversight or that they didn't book the adjustments appropriately. The other thing that's very important that we always like to point out, when you talk about financial statements in accordance with GAAP, you're looking at June 30, 2017. What you also want to know is that they're consistent with the prior year. So there were no new accounting changes this year, no changes in estimates for anything that has an estimate, no changes in accounting principles. So what you had last year should be consistent with the information that you have this year. And of course, from an accounting perspective, since numbers live in continuum, that's very important as well. In addition to the financial statement audit that we performed, which you have in front of you, we also conducted a federal single audit, because as you know, you have a lot of programs ongoing right now predominantly in your water and sewer operations where you have major construction, and you're using federal funds to fund some of those programs, and so therefore you spent in excess of $750,000. We have to perform specific tests over those financial statements that relate specifically to your federal dollars. Once again, we had no findings associated with the management of your federal programs. To kind of touch on just the financial highlights, if you will, so this year, if you look at the City of Salisbury, so we've covered the fact that your opinion is clean, that we had no material adjustments, so from your perspective, what has been shared with you during the course of this past year should be consistent with what's in this document. That's important, because this is the document that's going to live on your website. This is the document that's going to go to any funding sources that might want to see your financial condition, and so it's a good message to be able to say that what ended up in the audit report is consistent with what we've been told by management throughout the course of the year. Financially, what were the results for the City of Salisbury this year? Okay, so if we look down at the fund-level presentation, that's predominantly your general fund, and you talk about your general fund budget. You came in pretty close, within, I think, less than 1% of revenues when you look at the budget experience that you had compared to the budget experience that you anticipated for revenues. So your revenues came in very close to budget. Your expenditures came in under budget. A lot of that had to do with the fact that you had some capital projects included in your budget. As you know, you've approved those, but capital projects can sometimes take on a life of more than one year, so those budget dollars will carry over to the next year. But even if you pull those out, you had some savings from debt that were reflected there as well, so some of your debt payments were down. So you really fared well from a budget perspective on the expenditure side. Your overall fund balance decreased slightly this past year, so, you know, once again, your general fund fund balance is carrying, from an unassigned perspective, you're carrying roughly two months of expenditures. That's good. It's not great. It's good, you know? I would just encourage you not to go below that, but managing the fund balance is looking pretty good. As you know, you've had a lot of capital projects ongoing, and so when you look at the total city, you've got a lot of capital going on right now, okay? Water, sewer, also some governmental infrastructure projects, and so one of the things that we looked at very closely was the management of those contracts. Are they being properly bid? Are they being properly managed? It's one thing to manage the total budget of a city government, but when you add a major project onto it, that ups the workload for everybody. So once again, we're very cognizant of controls, contract management, and found no instances there. Your proprietary operations, predominantly your water and sewer operations, did have a favorable year this year, so they had revenues which exceeded expenses. As we talked about last year, that's very important. From an enterprise fund perspective, you want to be sure that you're capturing on an annual basis from charges, that you're capturing what it costs to keep those enterprise functions going, but that you also are capturing things like depreciation, because that goes back into maintenance over time of those processes. So those funds work a little bit different than the general fund does, and they did add to their equity position, which is a good thing. The other thing that I would just touch on, we talked, for the past two years, we've mentioned the fact that you have a very large unfunded pension liability because you participate in a multi-employer plan, and unfortunately, we have not seen a positive turnaround yet in the performance of that plan. So the plan performance has gone from, as of June 2014, the plan performance was at about 72% funded. It went down to 69% funded, and this year, down to 66% funded. So that liability is being reflected. It's not a liability that you have a difference -- that you have to meet an obligation currently that's determined by your contributions, which are dictated by the state and by the plan. As Keith has pointed out to you in the past, the state has said that they will not pass that unfunded liability down to the local government level. So far, they haven't, so we don't know if that will happen or not happen. That remains to be seen. So that's a real, you know, 30,000-feet, you know, look down on the results of the audit. I would also point out to you that we did not have any material weaknesses, any significant deficiencies. We had no recommendations that were new this year, so a good job being done by the Finance Department, especially when they had a year of some changes in personnel, and so the controls are working well, they're in place, and they transitioned. This was a good test year for that, because those controls transitioned with new people coming in and moving into those roles and having to, you know, pick up the process and carry it forward. So with that, I would like to -- I'll entertain any questions, but I'd also like to just thank you on behalf of our firm, on behalf of Tim, our manager, and his staff who were on-site, on behalf of your staff who accommodated them in their lunchroom for three weeks or so. We would like to just say thank you for your business. We really, truly appreciate it. And with that, I'll take any questions that anybody has?
Okay. I think -- I thank you very much, Mrs. Baker.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. I think personally, I'd like to commend the Finance Group and all the departments for their attention to detail. It's always nice when you get a clean report with no majors, and that goes to the attention to detail that you were referring to. So thank you again. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
At this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the audit, to accept the audit as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda and Ms. Jackson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
May I?
Sure.
Just a couple of quick notes from that. The note about, or I shouldn't use terms that are actually used by your industry. They comment regarding depreciation of water and sewer assets. You know, you'll be receiving a water and sewer rate study soon, which will more thoroughly consider the total cost of operating and maintaining that significant system. I should also mention that the largest capital project in city history, it was the comment about capital projects, significant capital projects, will be coming off, will be completed here in the next few months. And regarding the unfunded pension and OPEB liabilities, while we, again, we know, and we've all talked about, the fact that we won't have to shoulder that burden unless the State of Maryland somehow falls apart, we have already taken, this council's taken, significant actions to address those liabilities and to reduce the growth of that liability in the future and to reduce it where possible with divesting from 10 to 20, and to address the burden of spouses on our healthcare system and retirement. But I think more than any of that, I do want to mention and how much I appreciate, not only our auditors, but very importantly, and Sandy, you, your entire team, Keith, thank you for the job, tremendous job you have done. When I look back over audits from past years, they were full of notes, and, you know, I look at how we've chipped away and chipped away and chipped away to get it down to a point where there is nothing. And, you know, I just, you never know how talented your team is until you see the results that they produce. And while I appreciate Keith Cordrea as a person, I have no ability to judge the talent of a finance director, and I can only judge him by his results. So I think, you know, we're just very appreciative of how effective they are at watching out for the taxpayers' resources.
And to add to that, I mean, I think this is, like you said, and I've seen over the years, the reports and the issues, and the issues of the city getting the reports together in a timely manner for you guys to do your job. That was a significant problem, you know, 10 years ago. But I think this, I think it signifies the talent that we have in our city, and it signifies the commitment to excellence from our team, and I think that is, this is a very significant report, probably the best one we've ever had that I can recall of paying attention to city history. So good job to our team, good job to our mayor, and everybody for leading that. I appreciate that.
Any other comments? The only thing that I will say is that, and I think I mentioned this last year, we have to keep an eye, and Mrs. Baker referred to it, on our...
Fund balance.
Fund balance, yes. Fund balance. Remember my classes, you know, at MML, and three months is recommended minimum, and I think that we need to get back to that point, and I'll certainly be looking at that when we come to the most fun time of the year. No, it's Christmas, no. Soon.
Soon.
The budget time, so, but that's something we're going to have to pay attention to, just as a heads up. Okay. Next up, I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2471.
So moved.
Seconded.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Rudisil. Good evening, Mr. Tillman.
Good evening, Mr. President. This is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury to establish a nonprofit parking permit rate and to approve a temporary change in parking fees for all governmental entities' parking permits effective January 1st, 2018, whereas the City of Salisbury desires to reduce parking permit fees for nonprofit organizations operating in the general business district and parking within the downtown parking district, and whereas some nonprofit organizations pay for their employees' parking permits within the downtown parking district, and whereas the City of Salisbury desires to temporarily waive parking permit fee increases established in the 2018 Fee Schedule for all parking fees paid by, and inadvertently, this paragraph still says "just" Wycomico County, it was changed in three other places, but I called it this evening, paid by, and it should read "all governmental entities on behalf of their employees," so on 12 and 13, and that change will be made and effective for the next reading. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury that a nonprofit parking rate be established, which shall reduce parking permit fees by 25% for downtown parking district parking permits purchased by nonprofit organizations operating in the downtown business district and which shall become effective January 1st, 2018, and be it further ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury that there shall be a temporary stay of fee increases shown in the 2018 Fee Schedule for all downtown parking permit, parking district parking permits purchased by all governmental entities for their employees effective January 2018 through June 2018, and be it further ordained and acted as ordinance shall be introduced at a meeting of the City Council and tonight and duly passed at a meeting of the council at the next reading, and would become effective, I believe, January 1.
Any questions?
I just make a note that we need to do a special session next week to...
Yeah, we'll have to have a special session.
So we'll have to get some signatures this week. Other than that, no question.
Okay. So, and that, we need to make that, make sure that change is in there as well, the change to the... All right, so no other questions, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2471 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2472 for the first reading.
So moved.
Seconded.
Mr. Boda, Mr. Rudisil.
This is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury, Maryland, to amend the FY 2018 Fee Schedule to establish separate rates... to establish separate rates for transient parking pay stations, whereas the city established a fee schedule with the adoption of the fiscal year 2018 budget of the city of Salisbury, and whereas the city will be installing pay stations for the use of some of the city's transient parking spots, and whereas the fees listed in the 2018 fee schedule passed with ordinance number 2425 had parking meters and pay stations listed at the same rate, and whereas the pay stations will allow transient parkers to pay for multiple hours of parking at one time, and whereas the city desires to limit the number of hours that may be paid at one time to three hours and charge a premium rate for use of the pay station parking spot in excess of two hours in a row, and whereas the remaining fees in the 2018 fee schedule shall remain as currently set forth in the Salisbury Municipal Code, now therefore be it ordained and acted by the council of the city of Salisbury that amended fee amounts in the attached Exhibit 1 FY 2018 fee schedule, parking permits and fees be amended by the city of Salisbury, and the amount set forth therein shall supersede the corresponding fee amounts prescribed in the Salisbury Municipal Code. And the fee schedule is attached.
The schedule is attached.
Yes.
And I, I will, I'm glad that we were able to work out the less than an hour thing with the quarters, which, which is great, and I, I'm very happy that we've limited to a three-hour, a three-hour max. So, any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2472 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Tillman.
Thank you.
We have one request for comment. Riley Smith. And regarding the audit report.
Here comes the comrade. I was hoping the auditors would still be here, but obviously they're not. Two things I'm concerned about are the water and sewer audit report said that they had a reduction in expenses or an increase in their fund balance, and I just don't understand why we had a 2% tax or sewer rate increase, and I'm extremely concerned about the unfunded pension plans. And I guess I have a question with regards to, do employees have 401Ks, or is it all completely intertwined with state and city funding?
What, what exactly are you looking for?
Will we be raising taxes again? Will we be raising water and sewer fees again?
Well, the water and sewer fee, would you like to comment, or would you like me to handle that?
Well, public comment is not the time for questions. I've got nothing to say.
Right. Okay. Okay. Any other comments for the good of the order? No? With that, we're adjourned. Thank you.